All right, Nicholas Pardue hereby reconvene the Board of Education's special meeting in open session at 5:03 PM. We have a quorum present with three board members in attendance. Please note that this meeting is being both recorded and livestreamed for public viewing. I would like to welcome the community members in attendance this evening. As a reminder, governing board meetings are a business meeting of the board, held in public. And although public participation is encouraged, it is not the public's meeting. It is the meeting, I'm sorry, it is a duty of the board president and/or clerk of the board to maintain an orderly, respectful, and peaceful meeting where all perspectives, voices, and opinions are welcomed. Please refrain from speaking while another person has a floor, and I will include booing, hissing, and other verbal responses. B1, the board did not take any formal action in closed session? D2, I call on Nancy Young for the pledge of allegiance. Approval of the agenda, calls for motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries 3-0. Item D4, public comment regarding meeting agenda items. And I think we just read that. At this time, the governing board welcomes public comments. Individuals wishing to address the board are requested to complete a request to address the Board of Education card located at the entrance of the boardroom and submitted to the executive assistant. In accordance with bylaw 9323, individual speakers shall be allowed up to three minutes to address the board on each agenda or non-agenda item. The board shall limit the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. The board shall take no action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda except as authorized by law. That being said, our first speaker is Chris Tomassian, followed by Emily Brooks.
Good afternoon. I believe the only way to allow voters of trustee area three to have a voice in the selection of a school board member to represent them is through an election. Voters deserve to choose their board member, just like the rest of Murrieta has done. You all have talked about your constituents and that you represent them. Please give the voters of trustee area three the courtesy of selecting their own board member, just as the voters in your trustee area have done. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Brooks, followed by Jeremy Murphy.
Good evening. In this room last week, you heard from over 20 parents and teachers who urged you not to sign our district's name to an amicus brief prepared by a highly partisan law firm, and you did it anyway. Mr. Pardue, when your comments after that, you dismissed our concerns by saying that we did not represent all the constituents, and there were plenty of other people who shared your views and for whom you exercised your vote. You said something similar at a meeting last spring, implying that those of us who come here regularly and speak to the board--
Do you stick to the agenda item, please? Will you get there?
Yeah, I'm getting there. Listen up. That we do so only for partisan reasons. I hope that in the vote you take tonight on Agenda Item 5, which I'm coming to speak about, regarding the upcoming, the replacement of Ms. Munoz, that you listen to all the voices in the room tonight. That's the point of these meetings, so that you can listen and respond to public comments and take those into consideration when you make decisions. That's your obligation as a trustee of this board. You're here as a trustee, that's a position of public trust. You're required to listen to public input before you make decisions that affect this district, such as putting our name on a brief before the Supreme Court, such as appointing a new board member. I hope that you look at those questions that you are supposed to consider when you, you know, if you have, and if you choose to appoint somebody, which I'm sure you're gonna, you're going to do tonight. There's a list of questions you should ask those people, so I'm sure you've already got someone in mind. I'm sure you've probably talked about it, though you're not supposed to. But I want you to listen and ask proper questions. Listen, ask if the folks who are coming to replace Ms. Munoz actually support public education. What connections do they have to public education? How do they see the role of the board in their role as a trustee? Those are the important questions that the public here wants to listen to. If you do that, a nice, clean, open process, I'll fully support whoever you put on that board. But I want everyone here to be able to have an input. If you can't do that, then, like Chris said, let's have a vote. Put it to an election, let the people decide, because clearly, if you're gonna come in here with the same predetermined ideas, not listen to anyone in the room during our public opportunity to do so, it's not gonna be a fair position, and it's not gonna be a fair process. You're all about supposedly transparency and fairness, so let's see it in action. Either invite folks to apply, have a nice, fair appointment process, ask all the right questions, listen to the responses, and pick somebody who truly has public education at heart, and who isn't gonna pursue a highly partisan agenda. Thank you.
Jerry Murf, Jeremy Murphy, sorry, followed by Will Spar.
I appreciate the time. I'm a dad with three daughters in the district, and it's, it's really simple. It'd be great if at the same meeting you approved the Constitution Day policy, that you also promote the democratic process and allow the residents of Area 3 to vote on their own representative. Now, I know you haven't always supported "we, the people" in the past. I mean, Nick blocked the bond vote and wouldn't let parents vote on our own schools, and you also ignored parents at the last meeting. So it's clear the democratic process might not have the opportunity to play out here. I also understand the funding concerns for the special election. 50K is no small chunk of change. I'm sure you will voice your concern with that spending, but it would mean so much more if you demonstrated that fiscal conservatism consistently. Like, I don't know, Nick, if you've ever addressed lighting the 50K on fire when you voted for the property purchase and then bailed on it afterwards? I mean, at least with this 50K, you're demonstrating that you value the democratic process, right? And you'd have, you know, something to show for it, letting people voice their opinion in the election, versus the money that was wasted and we have nothing to show for it. So it's, it's also important to remember, an appointment is also gonna cost money and in time and resources that you'll need to dedicate to that process. So it would just go a long way with all myriad of stakeholders if the board demonstrated that you support the democratic process to fill this vacancy. Thank you.
Will Spar, followed by Francis Burns.
Oh, hello. Not sure why I'm even here, except for Francis asked me. To be honest, I am for appointing a board member. I am also for the democratic process. However, given that you guys have been entrusted with the good intentions of our district, which I've been teaching here for 32 years and seen many changes, especially up there, I value your opinions. I forget the name of the woman who was up a couple times ago, but she said it really, really well, and that I do hope you choose the right questions, have completely fair and open interview process. And as we have, are so aware of in our country today, coming in with a predetermined idea is going to severely limit our ability to make a good decision. So keep an open mind. Whatever you decide to do, I'm gonna support you either way, but if it were up to me, given someone who's been in the process and understands what it takes to work behind that desk, I would much rather see an appointment versus an election at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Francis Burns, followed by Bob Cowell.
Good evening. Hope everybody is well today. Before I get to my comments, I just want to give a big shout out to my students. I just completed uploading the first six-week progress reports, and 85% of my students are at a C level or higher, and actually, 95% of those 85% are probably at mid-B and either higher. So I'm very excited about the start of this year, and I just wanted to start with something positive, so I hope you guys appreciate that. So, students, if you're listening at home, great job, keep up the good work. Now go do your homework. All right, so I'm here because I just wanna say that it's, it's obvious that the, our district is short on money, and elections are very costly. As Speaker before me noted, $50,000 is, you know, is quite a bit, bit of chunk of change when we have very little to spend. So I am speaking in favor of appointing somebody for the vacant board seat. I do wanna say, I do think it's important that when you have the process to solicit candidates, that it be very transparent, open-ended, and so people have the opportunity to go through that. And I do agree that the process that you go through to make the decision, I think that should be, that should be made public forehand, and everybody should know what you're looking for, and so that there's, there's no, you know, there's no this, there's no guise of secrecy or anything of that nature. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Bob Cowell? For H?
Yeah, you know, I signed up for three things, so I mean, I don't need three, nine minutes, though. All right. Just to say, I do support F1, of course, the Constitution Day idea. And F5, I think an appointment is the appropriate way here, because I looked at the recent election over there in the 63, 80, 63, Assembly District 63, and it only 18% turnout in the primary and the general election, which means there are very few people paying attention during a special election, which means that, that you get more turnout and better democratic process if you do it during a governor or presidential year. As a matter of fact, the state of California, Democratic State of California, voted to move the, some of the county official elections off to a presidential year, or instead of having it during the off-year, for that very reason, because of turnout. So turnout for a special election would be very bad, so I go for the appointment process. The third thing was H2, which was the bonds and bond finance workshop. I, the last time, somebody mentioned that you, Nick, didn't support democratic process. That was not true, the 55% rule, that was not met, met. Therefore, that, that was illegal to pass that bond and put it on the ballot, because it did not meet the threshold of 55%. And we did meet the threshold of a 66% bond, but it did not meet the 55, so you did the right thing on that one. The other thing that I'd like to say is, if you're going to put this bond on, I noticed that there were swimming, you know, swimming pools within the school or district. Now, I have a, you have a constituent in the audience who says, hey, we don't have a public swimming pool. Well, I know that private schools have opened up in other areas, not private schools, public schools have opened up their swimming pools to the public, so the public can use them at certain times that the school's not, not using them. Maybe that's an option. Instead of the city spending all that money on a, on a, a public swimming pool, that we use our regular schools to do that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Those three cards threw me off a little bit, so next up is Courtney. Vanell, how do you say? Vanell. All right, thank you.
I am definitely not a public speaker, so I'm gonna read this. Okay, so bear with me. I want to begin by thanking the board for your hard work and dedication to our children. I also come before you today as a concerned parent of a student in this district, and I'm not here alone. I represent families in Ms. Young's district who share my same perspective, and I've spoken to many of them just recently. I'm asking that we save the district the $50,000 and bypass the election. I believe this would be a fiscally responsible choice, especially since-- I believe this would be a fiscally responsible choice, especially since, excuse me, this is a position that will last twelve months before going up for election again. As has been in the past, we've always done elections, but I think this time we need to save our money. We are in that type of situation where money is tight for all of us. The savings could be directed to our schools that truly need updated classroom resources, improved technology, additional support, staff, and even strengthening programs that already exist to help our education of our children and their well-being. At the last meeting on September seventeenth, one of the concerned parents of the board, oh, sorry, a concerned parent came to the board. He was heckled off the podium, and that deeply troubled me, and I hope it troubled you guys as well. I also represent parents that are worried about being met with eye rolls and dismissiveness and discouragement when they step forward to speak. Parents should always feel safe sharing their concerns and know they have been met with respect and they care. We trust that our teachers and staff of our children have their best interests at heart, and in most cases, they do. I truly believe this. But in moments that happened at the last meeting, they were very disheartening and quite frankly, deplorable. The behavior displayed by the MEA representatives at the last meeting were unacceptable, and it should not and does not reflect respect or professionalism to the parents that deserve it. What happened on September seventeenth was disrespectful and should not be repeated. So tonight, I respectfully urge the board to consider the fiscal responsibility of saving fifty thousand dollars, reinvesting that money back into our schools where it's needed most, and ensuring the way this board operates continues to earn the trust of the parents of the community it serves. Thank you.
Thank you. Item E, the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are voted on collectively as a group upon board member requests. Items may be removed from the consent calendar for discussion and individual action. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar for items E1 through E2?
So moved.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries three-zero. Action items. F, second reading and adoption of proposed new board policy calls for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries three-zero. F2, approval of personnel report calls for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries three-zero. Item F3, public hearing regarding the proposed adoption of resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-six dash oh-four pupil textbooks and instructional material compliance for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five-twenty-six. I hereby open the public hearing at five-twenty-one PM. Do you have any comments or questions? Hearing none, I hereby close the public hearing at five-twenty-two PM. Item F4, adoption of resolution number twenty-five-twenty-six oh-four pupil textbooks and instructional materials compliance for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five-twenty-six, calls for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries three-zero. Item F5, discussion approval of process for filling of board member vacancy, calls for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So what is the, what did you motion?
To approve.
To approve? This is a...
Oh, sorry. Discussion of approval of the process for filing a board member vacant, for filling, sorry, filling a board member vacancy.
So there's a process, there's a choice of either calling for an appointment process or calling for a special election now, and so that, we need a motion on one of those.
So currently, we just called a motion to discuss.
Right.
And then we'll have the discussion, and then we can have a motion to decide which way we go. Do either of the trustees have something to say on the issue?
I do. I want to thank everybody for coming out, for giving the feedback, because we are, we're trusted to hear the feedback from our community, and I'm so grateful for everybody who did come out, whether for or against the election or the appointment process. You know, and historically, I actually looked it up, and I even came and talked to the superintendent. Historically, Myrieta has never done in a special election and has always appointed. And in fact, Ms. Tomassian, who sat on the board as a trustee, appointed two during her term. So it's not anything out of the norm to do it. The process is completely open to the public. Once they do the job posting, it's something that anybody in this room who lives in that district can apply for, and you're over eighteen, you know, all of the process in the spirit of transparency, even the interviews are done in the public space. So when we do those interviews, and I appreciate Ms. Brooks, the questions, if there's a question that maybe is not on that list that we, as a board, we can consider, I'm completely open to that, because we want not just any person, we want the right person who's going to serve our district to the best of their abilities. So I just want to put that out there. Never been done. This is going to be, it's a new process for, like, me as a new board member, right? But this is not something that's new to the district, so I'm excited about that. It's going to be, it's going to be a great process, and I believe an appointment is where I'm headed, just so everybody knows.
Yeah, if we were under normal conditions with boards that behaved in a nonpartisan way, I would totally support an appointment, just because of the way things have been going the last few years with an emphasis on culture wars and politics. I don't feel like an appointment process would be fair. The public elected Mrs. Munoz, and I'm, my fear is they will appoint somebody who shares their political beliefs and not somebody who supports all the students, who supports public education, and who will support this district. So I am very conscious of the money. I think we've wasted way more money than that on this culture wars nonsense, and I think we will waste less money in the long run if we have a special election and let the voters decide. That's all I have.
I have a quick question for you, because you did mention wasting money. Do you have some specific funds that you think have been wasted?
Well, you just hired two law firms owned by the same man to launch culture war attacks, and there have been multiple lawsuits over the outing policy and other policies, which have cost the district tens of thousands of dollars. And I wish I could be optimistic that this would change. What I would love to see is us focus on the students and not be engaging in culture wars. I just, I'm not optimistic, I don't see signs of that. I would love to see that change. We would all get along great if we could get off the culture wars train.
I think we all get along great. I don't see where protecting girls is a culture war, just personally. It's not a culture war.
I think it's important for us to pay attention to a few things. So you mentioned tens of thousands of dollars. I know that none of that came from the amicus brief, by the way, or the legal team that we brought on so that we could speak to them. It costs zero dollars. Not a dime has been spent, nor for the amicus brief. So that doesn't mean, just because someone says it's true, doesn't make it true. I think that's important. There was one more comment that was made about how it cost us fifty thousand dollars to pull out of a real estate deal, where we were overpaying by more than two million dollars, according to the public that came out in huge numbers, saying, why are you overpaying for this property? So fifty thousand dollars. So are we advocating that we should have overpaid by three million, and that was somehow saving us money? I think that's kind of ridiculous. So the same thing is with the math that we have going on here. We're concerned that responding, and I'm pretty sure Mrs. Briggs got on this board in part for advocating for some of the positions, and we've been doing, I think, pre-measured job of advocating for parents and making sure the parents' voices are heard, and so that they have an active part. Because remember, when we're here on the board, we don't represent any special interest group. We represent the community we serve, which are the parents and the families that are here. Well, I think it's important to pay attention to the fact that we have had elections. Those have not gone very well for one of the special interest groups, which is MEA, who spent ten K on each of the failed candidates. That's thirty thousand dollars of dues that went flushed right down the toilet on this election process that they made, and unfortunately, it didn't go well. It hasn't gone well two cycles. Now, we're going to talk about what the democracy, what the process looks like for this particular position. Not only will, if we move forward on an appointment and we appoint someone who's supposed to go into a special election, we'd have to pay fifty thousand dollars, let's pretend we go this way, fifty thousand dollars for a special election, to be followed up less than a year later with another election. We have to have another election after that. So they have to run, then they have to run again, then they have to run again two more years later. So the people are going to have plenty of opportunity to speak about that particular position. Now, as people are sitting here in the audience saying, well, this person was just elected and handpicked and spent, the ten thousand dollars of MEA dues went for this person who stepped away from the job. So I'm just going to say this right now, just because you're going to have an election doesn't necessarily mean it's going to go the way you want it to. Okay? So I like the fact that it's an open process. Everyone's going to get to see what's going on. You're going to have plenty of input about who this person is. It would be nice, because tonight was dedicated to the idea of a bond, and I know that issue's come up more than a few times. And interestingly enough, this board was the one that said, you know what? Apparently, the state, the only way that the state is going to give us money is if we put it on the taxpayers of Myrieta to fund our schools, because the state's not going to fund us. They give us half the money. That's why your pay's so low. We don't have control over what the state does. We can only do what the state allows us to do. Now, no matter how many times I try to say, hey, well, let's go after them legally, well, we may or may not win. I don't want to waste our resources going in a lawsuit, and we've been very measured with that. So now we're going to end up putting this to our community on a bond, and we're investigating that scene. What does that look like? Now, here's the big problem. Unfortunately, in these board meetings, we have on one side a teachers' union who literally in the last meeting heckled the one parent who came concerned about the issue. The optics of that are so terrible for this bond, because those are the people who vote. And I get it, the same names come up every, I have the same five people come up and make their voice heard every single meeting. All right? That's partisanship. Let's just be clear. We're not, you know, because I'm up here and I have an opinion, yes, I have an opinion, right? So does everybody else, right? We're entitled to that. But let's not get it too twisted with this idea that those five people represent everyone in Myrieta. They don't. They don't. They have the time to come to a board meeting and make their voice heard. And what the issue is here is that the community who's watching here is going to be weighing in at the ballot, and we could end up not getting any of that bond money, because there are people, our enrollment's already dropping. While we're going through negotiations, we're trying to figure out, where are we going to get this money to be able to pay the teachers? Keep in mind, my wife is a teacher in this district. I teach at Paris Union High School District. I get, I've watched my pay steadily go up, because the state changed the way they fund LCAP, and I've watched Myrieta's go down. It's completely flipped. So for those of you who are young enough, you're not paying attention, that's what's happened in my own household. And now we have to watch our enrollments go down, and you don't think that in a conservative area like Myrieta, that people might be a little bit concerned about some of these issues? For sure, they are, and they're paying attention, and they are watching. And they're watching you, and they're watching your behaviors, and wondering, should I raise my property taxes to pay for those teachers and the facilities for this public school education? So we need to be paying attention, because it's the community you serve. As a teacher, I'm very aware that the kids in my class have a variety of perspectives, but I serve them. Their parents are paying my paycheck to teach them economics, and that's what they expect from me. They do not expect political activism from me. So we need to be very careful about what we're doing. So I'm just going to leave that out there. You guys are going to have to decide what you do and how you handle yourself for the next year, because the voters are watching. And they're going to, and keep in mind, you are 0-3 in the last cycle. Just letting you know.
Are we calling for a motion?
I would like to move for us to fill this position by appointment.
A second.
All right. Ms. Young?
No.
Yes?
Yes.
Motion fails two-one. Item G, the school financing board workshop will convene following a brief recess. To rearrange the room, members of the public are welcome to attend. The board workshop will also be livestreamed. I call for a motion to adjourn the Board of Education's special meeting at five-thirty-four PM.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we're adjourned.
We're adjourned. You there? Are you picking up my voice? Is it going? I'm assuming we're good.
I'm waiting for a thumbs up. Yep, go ahead.
We just said go ahead.
Yep, I got you. I need to figure out where it was. Hi, Nicholas Pardue, hereby call the Board of Education Workshop to order at 5:46 PM. We have a forum present with three board members in attendance. This is General Obligation Bonds and Bond Finance Workshop. I call on Dr. Andrews.
Thank you, trustees and staff, for engaging us in a little bit different format that we could have all sat at the dais and kind of had a presentation again, but the intent is this kind of closer proximity workshop, workshop style, a little less formal, as we go through this process to really have a deeper understanding of what bond finance looks like. Separate from operational budgets and average daily attendance, schools in California, construction of schools and renovations are funded very differently. We felt it was important for the board to go through a process to learn more deeply about them. And so, for that purpose, we're also having this meeting, again, in public in an open session. It's being broadcast and streamed for the public to see and have access to the slides, and all the materials are here. So I'm going to turn the remainder of the workshop over to our deputy superintendent, Darren Daniel, and our CFO, James Whittington, and our colleague, Richard Calbaro. Is that close?
Calibro.
Calibro, from Piper Sandler, who's been our bond consultant for some time. So Darren, indeed?
Thanks, Dr. Andrews. Good evening, President Pardue and trustees. Thank you for having us tonight. Our tip tonight is for James, myself, and Rich to be able to begin the finance, bond finance discussion with you as we prepare the board to pursue a bond feasibility. As already mentioned, we're joined today with Richard Calibro, Managing Director for Piper Sandler. Piper Sandler has provided financial advisory for the district for years, helping district manage long-term debt and structured bond issues that fit our capital needs. Tonight's agenda will be, while a little bit simple, but absolutely, but in-depth at the same time. Our presentation tonight is to talk about why school districts need a bond program. We'll walk you through two types of bonds that are available to us, the important parts of bonds, the types of bond projects that could be funded by a bond, and give you a glimpse into the district's bond history. And lastly, James, Rich, and I will finish discussing, by discussing bond tax rates and a scenario for a future, future bond initiative. During the presentation, feel free to interject if you have any questions or need clarification. With that in mind, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to James.
Thanks, Darren. So the goal of tonight is to go through some high-level overview of the bonds, the different types of bonds we have, both Prop 39, Prop 46, excuse me. And then, I'll turn over to Rich, who will really go into the detail of where we've been in Marietta and some of the potential paths forward as we consider a future bond here in the district. So let's start with the basics of Prop 39 versus Prop 46, so the two different methodologies. I'll start with Prop 46 first. That's a proposition passed in 1986, and for many years, it was the only way to pass bonds in California. This is non-voter, or this is, sorry, voter-approved debt, so the voters approve this debt, and then bonds are issued to finance capital projects in the district. So under Prop 46, the threshold to call the election, so the board would have to act in a simple majority, so three out of five members, in the case of Merida Valley, accountability requirements, there weren't really any. The use of the bond proceeds was specifically limited to the acquisition improvement of real property. You could not do any furniture or equipment that went with that property as you acquired it or as you built it, built those projects. In terms of bond tax rate or taxpayer protection, there was none. There could, it was an uncapped limit. You could pass a tax rate of any amount, but the voter threshold on that was, was 2/3, so 66.7% with Prop 46. You'll see, as we talked about Marietta, we struggled to pass some bonds in those years. We narrowly missed a few times. But then, in 2000, the state of California passed Prop 39, which lowered the threshold. So it took that threshold from that 66.7% of voters down to 55%. But with that, they changed some of the requirements that go along with that. So Prop 39 now requires 2/3 of the board acting to call for the election. So we require four out of the five members to call for the election here in Marietta. It has some accountability requirements that go with it. So there's a bond project list, there's the establishment of citizens' oversight committee, and then there's annual financial performance audits that must be conducted by an independent auditor. The bond tax rate, there's protection on the upper limit for that. It's capped at $60 per $100,000 of assessed valuation for a unified school district in California. And then, the use of proceeds, construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation, replacement of facilities, the acquisition at least of real property, and then also the initial equipping and furnishing of those school facilities is allowed under Prop 39. And so, that's, those are the two key differences between a Prop 46 and a Prop 39. Both are still allowed, and you could pass a bond under either scenario. But again, it just comes with different requirements on either end. Prop 39 is the most common these days in California. It's the most well-understood and usually favored due to require the additional accountability requirements that come with it. But since 2000, you could do a Prop 46, it's just rarely encountered because of that threshold to pass is so much higher. And so, I think most communities tend to go with the Prop 39 with that lower threshold, but higher accountability requirements for the community. Any comments about these differences? Questions?
I can approve.
Yes, yeah. It's posted online, it's on tonight's agenda, and it will soon live on the website.
And can I ask just really quick? So you're saying that bonds were struggling to get through the old way, and that's what inspired the changes?
I don't know, Richie, if you know the actual history. I think that was part of the conversation.
Correct. Yeah, back in 2000, a lot of school districts like yourselves were unfortunate to pass bond measures. I think Marietta at one point was 11 votes for passing an old Prop 46, and when they lowered the threshold, a lot of school districts throughout the state were able to fund their facilities with the local community involvement.
Right. And I think that's really important element, though, because it does highlight the idea that the community is not, you know, not in favor of, we pay so much in taxes. I think it's just so important for the public and everybody to get this. We pay so much in taxes here in California that the community turns around and says, now you're asking for more money from us to fund schools. That is the responsibility of the state to fund. And so, as they don't fund the state, then we're stuck, not just paying the high taxes everyone else does, but now we have to pass an additional tax. And I think that's the issue that I know I have as, as a taxpayer. And I know when I talk to constituents, very concerned about that as well. And then, then it also goes into the things that you heard in open session, too, as we were talking about, you know, whether it's culture wars or just what's being taught in the classroom, and are my taxpayer dollars funding some other agenda? And I think it's just important for us to get that they're connected. I do think they're very strong.
I think I would add to that is that with a, with a Prop 39 bond, with a bond, it is completely local controlled. So those tax dollars with a Prop 39, although it is taxes, I think we all, yeah, front, it is a tax increase. It stays local. So these are not taxes that go up to the state of California, that California then decides how to distribute down. These are, these are Marietta dollars, Marietta raised dollars that stay in Marietta for, for the community. So I think that's one, yes, it is a tax increase, but it does stay completely local. All the dollars that are raised get to stay here in Marietta for projects in Marietta.
The other part of when the, when the threshold with Prop 39, when they got lowered, there was all kinds of new accountability measures that were not part of Prop 46. So we didn't have bond oversight committee, there was no threat, there was no cap on how much a school district could, did a put a tax on at any one time. So Prop 39 came with new controls, it did lower the, that's kind of the exchange. There was more controls added by the community, but the threshold got lowered under 46, because having lived in, having been a public educator, trying to, living in a place where we did pass those, because I was in a local community where we were passing at 70% under Prop 46. And, but there just weren't those same controls. So it was kind of the handoff, I think, was part of the legislation that made it happen.
We just about have to have a 100% approval on this, because we can only afford one person to say no, I found out really clearly. One no vote is all the wiggle room we really have in passing this bond, because there's no intention, correct, of going for the 55%. No, maybe I'm wrong, sorry.
If we're not, if we can't pass the bond, we can only allow it to go on the ballot and allow the voters to vote.
Right, so if under a Prop 39, it would be a 4-1 vote. A minimum of four yeses on the vote to call for the election, to push it to the voters.
And it can be 3-2.
If, no, if we go to a 46, then it could be a 3-2 vote.
Okay, so explain that, because I want everyone to hear that. So that's very important.
So some of the, the handoff between Prop 39 and Prop 46, Prop 46 only requires a 3-2 vote to push it to call for the election, but requires a 2/3 of the, of the voters to pass it.
So in the last election, last time we did this, sorry, not election, but we had a 3-2 vote, we did not pursue the bond because...
We were considering a vote under Prop 39.
Right, but explain why or not we didn't just continue, because it was, we could have pursued it, correct? With a 3-2 vote, we could have pursued it.
Had we gone that route, the polling...
I think I just want you to clarify why that had to be done, because it could have went on the ballot in front of the public. We explained why it didn't go to the public.
We had structured the plan to be a Prop 39. Had we structured the bond out...
You're not answering the question, because I know what the answer is, but I want to hear what the answer is from you, so you can explain to the public why it didn't go to that. Why did it not go that?
Our intention was to do a Prop 39. We could have done a Prop 46, had we planned on doing a Prop 46, and that the, I would say, though, I think what you're trying to get me to say is the polling indicated we would have been a little bit below that 60.
We wouldn't have, it wouldn't have passed.
About 64, 65%.
Right, I think it was close.
So the...
But we decided not to.
2/3, almost 2/3.
I think the entire time we were planning our, was to go under a Prop 39.
I, I understand. I think, I think that was a critical element there. And, and from what I hear, just because at least I continue to hear it over and again... is that, well, we didn't put it in front of the public, but we could have put it in front of the public with a three-two vote. We could have had votes.
Planned.
Could have, but when we went through all the feasibility studies and polling and whatnot, we only went with, we only tested a 39. That's all I was getting at. That's all I really wanted to hear. I want the public to know that it is much harder to pass.
It's, it is.
And that's why we didn't pursue that.
Right.
And to go back where Rich said, you know, past practice has shown it's far more difficult to do that. But to go into, take the additional accountability measures that come with a 39, that's what we've already done. That's been our practice. And so that's what we pursued, that's what we tested, and that's what we polled, and look where we're testing the poll. We never polled the community on a 46, I mean, on the 39.
Yeah, I get it.
I was gonna say, we're gonna show some history of our Prop 39 versus Prop 46. The last two bond measures that the school district passed were Prop 39. And you can see the threshold that the voters approved, we would have lost on a Prop 46 the last two elections. We'll go through those details.
I think that'd be a question for bond counsel, but I don't believe in if a future call for the election comes before the board, and we're operating under a Prop 39, and there's only a three-two, we still can't push it forward as a pop. We can't change the color of it to push it forward. That's what I thought you were trying to.
No, 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 no. I just mostly want the public to understand that it could go to a vote. The people could decide with a three-two vote. And I think it's an important element here, because the dynamics of the board has shifted, right? Before it was, you know, the voting was a little more ambiguous, and now it's three-two the other way. And the three are kind of a little leery about bonds, just generally, and how the state has treated our district when it comes to funding. So that threshold becomes important, and understanding those dynamics become very important.
And I think we needed to know ahead of time which one we're going shooter or asking for. I guess my point is, night of, you can't say, because we've got only three of two, we're going Prop 46.
Right.
You can't change the color of the election.
That planning happens. That's part of this process now, so as we proceed and investigate, we've got a plan going forward that we're all.
And Nancy and I are the only two that were on the board when that process went through. So it's important, considering the threshold, what we're looking for, we need everyone to be very, very wide-eyed about that.
Right, and recall, like, we had polling data that was not indicating we're above 66.7%, and it's polling data. So we want to make sure we have some room if we're gonna pursue putting it on the ballot. We don't want to, we don't want to put it on the ballot and lose, I guess is.
Yes, let me give that.
So just in summary, it's Prop 39, which I assume is the route we're going to move forward. But if not, we can change that route. But Prop 39 would require 55% passage rate, it would require a four-one vote of the board. We have the option to go either in June or November 2026, so we can go on the primary or the presidential, or the primary or the, yeah, don't recall it. It would be a cap rate of $60 per $100,000, it would be the maximum we go to. We would pull different levels, that's something we'll talk about a little bit tonight. And then we would also have an approved project list that goes with that before we go that route. The board will also have the opportunity, if we pursue this and it does get approved and passed by the voters, the board has to authorize and approve each issuance, each individual bond issuance as it comes up. So when the bond passes, let's say it's a $100 million bond, there's not $100 million of new debt created at that evening of the election. What then happens is series are issued against that $100 million, and the board will approve those through action in future meetings. And then, of course, we'd have to establish either transitioning our current citizens bond oversight committee that we have for VB to function as the new citizens oversight committee, or establish a separate one for the new measure. Yeah, I think that's a good question. I think the, so the committee has a list of required members, and so there's, there has to be representation from parent-teacher organization, taxpayer organization, the whole slew of slots that we want to make sure we fill. And so I think there is some value in having new members on the committee, perhaps, some fresh eyes. But we want to be cognizant that we have to fill all those seats, and sometimes we struggle to fill some of the seats. So we want to make sure we're complying with the citizens bond oversight committee requirements. And so I think there's probably, could be some middle ground to bringing in some new members or asking them that.
And they're not bringing them, is asking benefit or detriment, because I would think it's a bit of a learning curve and all that. Oh, somebody's had the biggest experience, they know what their list is for, would be beneficial, but that's just me.
Right, and the board approves all the appointments to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. So you guys get to approve any appointments to that committee, and we've had turnover with the years. It is not the same committee that started, maybe VB, there have been changed members over time. People move on, people take different roles, people decide they don't want to do it anymore. It's not as exciting when you get to the end, and there's less fun projects happening, so all those things happen.
I wanted to ask about the projects list, and is this an appropriate time to talk about that?
Well, we want to plan a full meeting on the project list, part of the facility study. So we can't, not really planning to spend a lot of time on it tonight.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of just mention, it would be really important for the people involved, like, I really, the staff. I mentioned the staff that, for example, is swim deck at MV. We got an amazing coach who's been coaching swim and water polo there for so long. You know, it'd be great to have input from the teachers that are actually on that. And so I wasn't sure if, as we're putting together that feedback, that we're really looking at the teachers who are hands-on in those particular areas. And that would include, like, I know I walked through MV's ceramics, and it was in dire need of help. I want to just make sure those teachers have some input about the things that we're looking to do.
Yeah, you're spot on. Both those projects you just mentioned, both have had, are already kind of in process. December, we're changing out some of the cabinetry inside the ceramics area. And so Jose Contreras has been leading that effort and walking alongside of Mr. Fitzpatrick, I believe his name is. And in addition to the swimming pool death, we're already in process. And both that water polo coach and the swim coach have been working alongside with Mr. Deep House and our facility team, from looking at all the plans, making adjustments, down to the details of what the starting blocks are going to look like, and how they're going to be placed. That's, that's that. I think the last thing to mention, I know Rich will talk about this a lot as he goes through the next few slides, just a point on the tax rate. So the tax rate is on assessed value, not market value. I know it's something that comes up frequently, so when we're talking about a tax rate, that tax rate is based off of your assessed value. So if you look at your tax bill, you have an assessed value, it increases annually, it's capped, increases capped annually. But that is, the tax rate is based off of your assessed value, not your market value. And I think there's, in the last few years, there's become a growing gap between people's assessed value, depending on when they bought their home and their market value.
And mine is huge. My market value is maybe four times as much as the assessed value.
That's good, congratulations.
Mine not so much. I taxed a little higher just for that.
So 2026, June or November primary gubernatorial, is there historically a benefit to putting something in June versus November? Or, I mean, is that we have to decide what month we put something?
We'll work with our pollster as we go through bond feasibility, and they'll look at data on who shows up to those elections.
Because we have to hear someone talk about percentage of 39.
We have typically fared better in the November here in Marietta, just greater turnout.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Rich, I'll turn it over to you, I think, for the next.
Yes, I understand.
I think you're good.
I'm good.
Yeah, you're good.
First off, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. I've actually served the district since 1997. It's been a very long time, been through four bond measures through the years. And I just know that this district really focuses on the taxpayer. You know, each one of these bond measures, you're talking about taxes, there was difficult decisions through the years, we all know. And some of the bond measures that I'm going to go through were just specific to a project. And then some were, we've got a lot of needs for the next 10 years, let's go for it. But they always had in their back of their mind, how we're going to structure the tax rate. That's the most important part, is how are we going to do this over time to make sure it fits with all of the stakeholders in the community? You know, the taxpayers are the number one source, and we'll go over that, that's a slide that I have. It's going down, that percentage is going down, because we've got new businesses coming in, we've got light industrial coming in, they pay the taxes. So I just want to start off that I've been here a long time, I can't answer all the things back in the 90s and 2000s, but I'll try my best. Page seven is just the recap of what went on last November. These are all the Riverside County K through eight and K through 12 election that went on. There was 11 of them that went on in Riverside County, and 10 out of the 11 passed. All of them were a Prop 39. And you can see, some of the percentages were below that 66% that we're talking about. So if some of these school districts chose the Prop 46, they would not have been successful in their measures. But this just gives you a sense of what some of your neighbors. The other thing that I want to point out is, some of these school districts did not go to the max. James indicated that some of these unified school districts can go up to 60. Some of them went out to their community, they did the polling, they got a sense of what works for our community, what are they willing to pay for? So I just wanted to point that out, that it's very important, when we go to that step, we listen to see what the community is willing to support.
On that note, who's responsible for the polling? Is that DLR?
No, we'll work with our bond feasibility consultant, and we're likely to use TrueNorth as our research pollster, the same firm we used last time. I think one point on the tax rate, just the tax rate ends up deriving the amount of bonding you're able to do. So the tax rate we end up using dictates the amount that you go for in the total bond value. So if you go back to the previous slide, you can see that had they chosen a different tax rate, the amount would have been different than the bond amount. So those are correlated, so as the bond rate changes, the bond amount changes. It's just a quick aside. So it's not like we can choose a lower rate and get a higher bond amount, the tax rate we choose drives whatever the total bond is, becomes available.
Moving to page E, this is the Prop 46 that I was talking about, the successes that the school district had in the past. All the way back in 1989 was the Measure P that the district passed, and that was a Prop 46. Obviously, the law wasn't available to the school district, but you could see that these bonds have been paid off, you know, they no longer exist. Measure D was also a Prop 46. And look at the passage rate, it's 70% of the community step up back in 98, but this was after three failures. On the next slide, you can see that we had three measures, two of them in 1996, one in 1995. All three of these, you could see the passage rates, they just narrowly got to 66%. The one in 1995, I think it came down to like 11 votes, unfortunately. But these were the three failures before the community rallied behind that 1998. That was the last Prop 46 that the school district ever passed, was back in 1998. If we move to the next slide, we're going to get to our Prop 39 elections. These are the last three that the school districts were successful on. You can see, we put that final year of the tax levy, and we have a slide later on the presentation that shows these measures expiring, how they expire over time. But here are the different bond program sizes. I mentioned some of these were project-specific. Measure E was a grand slam for the school district, because they were able to cap some state-matching funds out of that election. But our current and outstanding is this Measure BB. We have 9.8 remaining bond authorization. We'll also talk about how we plan to structure the final remaining series of bonds. Any questions regarding these past measures? This is an example of the school district taking advantage of refinancing opportunities over time. As you can see, you know, a lot of these school bonds have a prepayment feature, and it allows the school district to refinance when interest rates go down. Remember, when we start off with bonds, we're usually going out 25, maybe 30 years. Well, there's a 10-year prepayment feature that allows the district to refinance 10 years after you sell the bonds. And these are examples of where the school district has taken advantage. And you can see at the very bottom, there's an opportunity next year to save the taxpayers about another $2 million, $3 million. Once again, this is money coming back into the community. We're taking it away from the bond investors, going to refinance at a lower rate, and the taxpayers get the benefit. None of it goes to the school district. This is all 100% going to the taxpayers. Any questions on this slide?
I got one. So on the bottom of this column, we have, where it says $30 million, is that a total savings? Or what is?
That's the total amount. That's the total amount eligible to refinance.
So going up above, say the one July 28, there was $33 million refinanced for a savings of $2.7 million.
Correct.
So we have, so since December 2011, through the, so 2021, through the refinancing process, the district has been able to save taxpayers $13.8 trillion in tax, that's not been taxed and didn't come to the district, it just becomes lower tax.
Yeah, lower interest rate on those bonds.
Okay, so savings.
Savings, yes.
Okay.
One of the things I did notice, the last two bonds, it was only 57% of the vote, too. Which is below 60, you know, because we're saying 66, 55 is a threshold, right?
Correct.
Looking at.
Correct.
So the public hasn't exactly been, woo-hoo, at 60 somewhat, you know what I mean?
Correct.
So I think the perception is going to really matter moving forward on that. So I just, I don't know why it took so long to, I did see that. And but I think one of the points is, James, who triggers the bond refinancing? Who's responsible for getting the savings and getting the bond refinanced?
It's not all you know. It's an ongoing conversation usually between
Yes.
You two.
Yeah, so Rich is always scanning what the market is and when those opportunities come up, because like I said, it's 10-year window or 10-year timeline for when that comes. So we know, we know when the time is going to come up. So Rich already knows, June 2026, we have bonds that will be eligible to refinance. If rates stay kind of where they're at now, what the market's been doing, that's where we derive that $2.3 million savings. If rates continue to drop, it could be even more savings.
As a taxpayer, I really appreciate the two of you on the, and Johnny on the spot there, that's really impressive.
Yeah, I think we do everything we can to try to maximize savings for and we're not chasing every refunding. There's been refundings that haven't generated huge savings, but have costs associated with them.
Yeah, don't chase those ones.
We do when there is significant savings to taxpayers, because we don't want to be just issuing bonds, issuing bonds.
The community to know that they do, you know what I mean, that this effort's there to save them money, that's a highlight.
Yeah, and like Rich said, it is a 100% savings to taxpayers, no additional dollars.
Is that something that we announced to the public, or is like, is it just kind of?
We have done press releases before, yes, we have.
This is on the website, maybe you could add that explanation into it.
Yeah, and that calculation is done when the board is the one that authorizes the actual refunding to be issued. So it comes before you guys, you approve it, we know what that savings is at that time, so there is that opportunity for you guys to be a part of.
And so going back, you guys are actually the ones that do the action, I just.
I want to get you up there, James, can you tell the community the good news, and then you just do your thing?
Just help Rich with the math.
No, I think, I think it's really, so you know, I love, because Monica's really, our public information is always focusing on highlighting the good things. I think telling the community that there's this cost savings on behalf of the district that you guys worked to do is just like a really nice kind of, hey, thanks for fighting for us, or thanks for saving us this money.
So the last opportunity was July of '21, and the next one is June of '26.
Yep.
James had indicated, you know, one of the ingredients of building a bond program is the tax rate. But there are other parameters that the school district needs to consider. Number one is the size of your bond. Talking about projects, and I believe a master facilities plan is scheduled for early 2026. But all of these figures will be part of the bond amount, but also cash flow needs. You're not going to get all of your bonds at once. It's got to be planned out for the next eight to 10 years. So part of our job is to build a program that meets the school district's cash flow needs, how much do they need? But at the same time, we're going to find out what the community is willing to accept in terms of a tax rate. You know, that's an important component in building a bond program. Just as James mentioned before, each bond draw is passed by the board. Each one of those bond draws, it doesn't all come at once. It could be every three years, every four years, it all depends on cash flow needs, but also assessed valuation growth. I'm going to have a slide. I'm going to have a slide showing the historical growth rate of this community for the last 20, 25 years. And it's very healthy, very healthy. So one of the parameters for us when we build this bond program is what is the projected assessed valuation growth for this particular community? That's very important. You can go to 2%, you can go to 4%. Some people go to 6%. That's very aggressive. But we'll have a slide to show you what makes sense that we think in order to build a bond program. Also, the length of a bond program. You can go 30 years, you can go 40 years. Keep in mind, we have a restriction. That restriction is $60 per 100,000 for our bond program. We could never exceed that. If for some reason we hit another recession and assessed valuation growth rates go down and we go above $60, we can't issue anymore. And we've seen that happen. We've seen school districts who get over aggressive and they're locked out from issuing bonds. We don't want to be there. So when we build these bond programs, we want to make sure that assessed valuation growth is a key component when we build these programs.
I think that's an important, important note is that during the recession, we saw a lot of districts in the county where assessed values dropped so significantly that they had bond authorization. They had the ability to issue bonds, but they had no rate to tax. And so there was no ability for them to actually issue, even though they may have had the ability in the series to issue, they couldn't issue the bonds because they were locked into that, that rate as their assessed values had gotten. So there's, you get essentially locked out of the bond authority you have with the tax rate.
So when we come back later to build a bond program, these are some of the variables that you'll see in building that bond program. The length of the bond, the bond amount, what's our assessed valuation growth rate and what's our tax rate are pretty much the variables. And obviously, interest rates will have an interest rate assumption as well. Do the breakdown of what you can finance, the do's and don'ts. Examples, James is indicating construction of school facilities. That's the number one. Modernization projects, repair of school facilities, furnishing and equipping school facilities, safety and security and technology or something examples. Measure BB, I know was a big infrastructure technology part of that bond. It was very important at that time. Some of the things that you cannot finance out of a bond is operating expenses. Unfortunately, you can't pay for any of the operations, you know, teachers and administrators. None of it goes there, pension costs, none of it. It has to be for facilities, period. That is pretty much, and if there's any questions, it's pretty, it's black and white in terms of how you could spend a bond.
This is for a Prop 39 bond. If it's a Prop 36, we're capped at the first two items on the list. There's no room for, it's, we're capped at just acquisition and improvement. So there's no room for repair unless it's an improvement repair. There's no furnishing or equipping. There's no, the technology, the safety and security, I guess safety and security depending what it is.
I mean, is there a question about where, which one we're going to issue 39?
We need repairs for sure. Repair's a big part of what we're looking.
Yeah, yes.
I was not questioning it.
Oh, okay. Right, so I'm sort of fine here.
Okay.
Well, just on this note.
I just want to, I just want to be clear.
Yeah, no, no, I'm clear now. I was sure if you two were clear.
Just, I want to add.
Questions.
So you're, yeah, good point. Because we are leaning, we would be recommending a Prop 39 for all those reasons, primarily to get to these other items on the list.
Yeah.
Not just the lower threshold.
I think that's worth intensive.
Yeah, it's because we're allowed to do more things. These can't be used for any sort of district office function, can they?
Correct. No, no district op, unless it's like centralized, like.
Like the server, some like a technology piece, but like not a new building.
But not administrative buildings, correct. Administrative buildings are not allowed.
So we can't refurbish the superintendent's office with the bond bank. I best want to clarify this, like you have to just put this out there because the perception in the community has to, they have to see all this lovely, right? We have to know.
And, and the schools are the priority always. Classrooms and schools are the priority always, always, always. Even if there was like, which there wouldn't be money left over. It's not coming here. It's going out to schools.
Mr. Fitzgerald will thank you for that.
And then there's, and there's no regular school district employee salaries. And the teacher salaries and administrator salaries and superintendent salaries. The one exception would be anybody that we hire in a capacity that's like a project manager for, like actually physically working on a project we're constructing, we can charge those salaries. So if we have a project manager position that is specifically working on bond only, we can charge a portion of that salary.
Is that a project manager employed by the district?
Yeah.
Not a contracted?
Contracted can also be charged. In terms of employees, if there are employees that's a project manager, functioning as a project manager, we could charge that there.
Oh.
That would be allowable. It's in the bond language.
Yeah, it's in the bond language and that's usually less expensive than a contract.
Yeah. Okay.
And again, this is the framework for the overarching what's allowed. The bond project list boxes is in beyond this.
That's what we're going to look at next, right?
Part of that, because so now he had a plan.
So same with the draw. Now, if, one of the things that comes up a lot is that project list. So currently, right now, declining enrollments, we're not looking at a new school. But if somehow magically those birth rates jump up, so we could be in the future, but only if we have it listed as a project list. But isn't it a little, see, doesn't that get us in a, in a really odd gray zones? Because you'd want the flexibility of being able to go put money towards that. But we don't have an actual plan to build a school like that becomes really.
I think you're spot on with that. It's like looking at, right, so we've already gone through the redistricting to be able to try to take that off the table. However, we know that the vineyard project up on the west side is looming at some point in time. I mean, but they've been talking about that for decades. I think it's still a long shot. If in fact we created a project list, and again, that project list is being derived from the facility master plan, looking at what are the needs of our schools today? We are not, we're not necessarily diving into that new school item right now. That may be something that you may want to consider as a low priority in the facility master plan. But right now, as we're walking through all of our school sites, we are, we are seeing all the things that we need. We're kind of, you know, working with stakeholders, working with parents, we're working with teachers, we're working with administrators, walking every school site with the architect. And through that facility master plan process, our hope is that we are going to derive a priority list to set, created by the board. We will help and support and walk you through that. But I think we're, you're going to have opinions. And I know our, our community has opinions about that. But if that's not the priority right now, when we get into that, that project list, you can call out the things that you want to see showcased, like, hey, we're going to do this, this and this. Then there is an opportunity for some, some line items like, you know, air conditioning repair. It doesn't say where, it could be anywhere because at any point in time, you don't know when that AC is going to go bad on you.
Sure.
But so there is that tight and loose piece to it, to a project list that you can consider.
Well, and that's one of the big issues I see is for us is that uncertainty about the population and enrollments. And, and you can't go out into the future and really know for certain. But yet, when we had the, the bond issue placed in front of us, there was a lot of concern about what was on that list. And, you know, are we pursuing a school or not? So is there a way where we can communicate that to the public as we put this together? Hey, this is kind of an in case thing.
I think.
For a way to kind of.
There is a probably a way to do that. We can communicate, not necessarily on the project list. Because you can list like school construction or classroom construction, which is a pretty broad term that could be used, which could be applied to say Rail Ranch that we need to replace some portables with a building. But it could apply to a vineyard, Sykes Elementary is what it was called. The reality is that in, in kind of what we see, that the redistricting bought us many years' time until or if, we'll just say if, the vineyard actually gets built, that's going to trigger a school most likely. And so that may be, but who knows how far down the road that is. So we can phrase, we can phrase some language in that to give us the flexibility should we need it.
I think what we faced a little bit as a board was that we purposely put ambiguity in to be, whether you're nefarious or whatever, that we were just.
What was it?
Blank check. Yeah, I understand that. But what I'm getting at is that it was a blank check as opposed to the specific needs. And I think, I think we want to have flexibility and be transparent. And that's, that's an element that I'm getting at.
Yeah, at the same time, we also think there's needs for some specific things that are.
Some specific construction, like we talked about Thompson, there's lots of things.
There's plenty of things.
Circle back on a couple concepts that have already been mentioned. In fact, one is when there's a draw, that draw is coming with board approval. And you're not going to, I assume you're not going to draw without purpose and knowing there's absolute purpose behind what's going to fund that draw or be funded with that draw. Okay, so at all steps, the Board of Education is front and center in all these decisions. Again, we can come forward and make recommendations, but it takes board approval to be able to execute on the draw to the building. Because we have to go to bit where the public sit on these products.
So let me give you an example. It would be the process of, we would say, and we have it still, we have $9.8 million left to Measure BB to draw. But the decision is made like, well, we're going to say, we recommend these projects to the board. The superintendent, my staff will come with, in essence, the board president, and we would have a discussion about this is where we, this is where these projects are getting funded out of this draw, out of this money. And, and once we craft those agenda items and all that kind of comes together and the board is brought along and we inform you with like weekly updates and check-ins and wherever you need for information, when we're ready to go, that all comes. And so the board is absolutely in control of the decision of what gets done, what those projects approval are and when we draw the money. So it's never a blank check to us.
Well, and I think the, the part that I think is going to be important to, to the board, especially as we get closer to, to this vote, is feeling really comfortable about the process and what's going to happen. Because I think besides being critical and determining things down the road, it's also the passage of the bond itself.
Yes.
Because if I'm speaking to the issue as I go through my rounds or Eleanor, talking to constituents, we want to be able to communicate clearly the need and, and why we would support or not support this particular situation. And I think that's really important because we are kind of selling the concept as we move forward. And it has to be pretty clear.
Hey, you're absolutely selling. It is a spell to the community.
It is small as you want. We've got to lead with our need. And I think the purpose of this tonight is really to fortify you all with G types of concepts. So you can speak with clarity as you're talking to our community. We recognize you guys are all visible in your own right and you're going to be talking to people. But having you be able to, you know, provide correct answers to your folks that you're talking to, I know will be appreciated one, but also I want to make sure you guys always know the door is always open if you get caught with something you don't know. Please wrap back around us or give us someone's name that we can follow up with so we can clarify. I think it's really important through this process, because I kind of learned that last time, was making sure that all questions by board members are unearthed so we have absolute clarity that we're walking together.
Well, and I think one of the things that really stuck out was why that 2% matters. Between now, or let's say we pass. I mean, you're still talking about two percentage points. Let's, let's just pretend, because there was two, two bonds in a row. And with, with everything, the dynamics was just discussed at this board meeting. Now, we could really run into trouble if we're not real careful about our messaging. That's why as a community, I think it's really important, for the sake of our kids or the teachers, for everybody who works at the schools, if you want the bond to pass successfully, that kind of rhetoric and the kind of, we just need to be on the same page. Because look, if, if whether, I know I have MEA representatives in here. MEA voicing the need for a bond is different. On the west side of MEA, there's a lot of conservatives. And then Nick Party or Eleanor Briggs is saying, hey, by the way, we need this bond. And this is why for our kids, for this, for that. It's a different, different messenger. The messenger matters. And of course, the other things, all the other things that surround what's going on really impact what happens with the bond. So I think it's just important and it's important for everyone to be cognizant of that. And I feel like that is like really falling on deaf ears in our community. So I'm hopeful that we pay attention because that is a very thin margin that we're like in.
I think, I think it's going in the right direction though. In terms of DLR, there, we're going to frame it and package it with that meeting that we had Darren. But I thought was super, I'm excited to see what that end result is. Because I think the messaging across the board has to be the same. We have to be so united that, hey, we have to be sold on the fact that this is either a good thing or a bad thing, right? We have to know going in it. But I think Nick's right, the messaging is going to be hyper important that the transparency is there. I mean, even in terms, when you brought up the BB and we're, we're going to do one in your past for the 9.8 million, like that was a pre-established list for BB, right? Because there's all these things. But I don't know that the stakeholders in general are aware of bad, very specific lists. That, you know, that this is exact. And I know they can probably find it on the website. I'm pretty positive they can.
It's on the website.
Yeah, I know. But if we can help, so our job is to be able to be that kind of pass through, that here's the information or where can we find it? How do I make it easier for our community to find all of this information? And I understand technology is there, but there again, just going back to that messaging, once that website's up, I think all of these, like my FAQ, I want the FAQ on there that says, did we buy the superintendent's chair? No, you know what I'm saying? Do you understand? I have a FAQ because you have to think of the person who's not in this industry.
Even though the BB project list is on the website, it's, it's not specific to what that 9.8 will use. So it's the full listing. If here's what's allowable under BB, the 9.8, that is a decision we'll make when we go to issue that 9.8 million and how that could spend. So we have the, to your point, even though it's on the website, it's not clear what that 9.8 million will be used to fund.
You have to be like a tool, a geek or an XL junkie to be able to go into these things and read what, and give it to us in lay terms, you know, like, like 12 years old. Figure that because it helps.
And you know, well, I know when I knock door to door, talking to somebody, some of these hardcore older people, they don't have kids, they're not looking at our website, they're not paying attention. I think we were just saying that's part of probably why we don't have the same enrollment issues because some people are staying at home, they're just not as engaged. And they could have their back up against the state. They could have all kinds of different issues as to why they don't want to support that tax increase. And so those are the things we need to factor in, like, and again, that's us. Because again, we're the messengers as we go knocking that door. And especially the people who are most likely to vote against the bond are the people that we run into the most, right, on our side of the, so. Anyway, I just wanted to make that clear. All right, my bad.
Yeah, I kind of misunderstood something, but I thought board trustees were allowed to put the bond on the ballot. But are we allowed to advocate for it or against it? I thought we weren't allowed to.
Great question for our legal counsel, but.
Yeah.
But I think the high level version, high level answer, non-attorney answer is, one is, once the election has been told for, so once you guys have put the vote board to call for the election, we can no longer advocate as employees of the school district.
We can inform.
You can inform, like this is the project list, like the ideas.
We are going to be running elections, I'm assuming, run again, but we will and can potentially another board member. And when we, when we're knocking door to door, let's say, again, it's October, let's pretend we, everything's passed. We're going, and I'm sitting in someone's house and they're asking all these questions about schools. And so they ask about the bond and I got to be like, yeah, don't.
No, as a private citizen.
Not, not the camp. Oh.
No, I mean, for me, I'm speaking to a group of constituents and I'm at someone, in someone's backyard.
Isn't that loud?
We'll get some, we'll get really.
We need to know.
We will get you defensive legal counsel now.
I'd like to know.
The district cannot spend money advocating for the matter, right?
No, we're, the district can't.
The district can't.
But as a private, in my.
We will try to ensure you don't break. Well, we'll make sure you go to the rule.
All right.
Districts cannot speak to it, wants us to get on the.
We can, we can.
We cannot spend money to advocate for. So once, once the election's been told for, Darren can't say, hey, James, I need you to, all day, you're all, you're going to call, have the phone, call people and ask them to vote yes. Can't do that as, as CFO.
Okay.
In my time off, I can go do that. I can volunteer for.
Okay.
A community that's advocating for, but as, as a district employee.
We'll cross out. But yeah, I just, my, my brain was more thinking.
It's a great, great question.
I get that.
Go and go to jail.
All right, next slide. Well, this is the, the assessed value, the history of the assessed value.
Yeah.
Is this you, Rick?
Yeah. So this is the district's assessed valuation. I know this is not an IA exam, but this is the last 30 years. You can see, you know, we did hit some bumps during the Great Recession, but we have definitely have some healthy, healthy assessed valuation growth since the Great Recession. And you could see that we have, we're north of 5% on a 10-year average. And you could see that we have, we're north of 5% on a 10-year average. That is very impressive. The last three years, you could see coming out of COVID, we've, we'd seen 7%, 6%. Like I said before, some of this is residential driven, but most of it is some of the light industrial, some of the companies that have opened up in our school district boundaries that, that paid the tax. The 4% is what I believe is an appropriate number to use for your bond program, but this is something that the team will go over, whether or not that, that is appropriate for us. But that's how our current three outstanding measures are built on, is this projected 4% growth rate.
And I think, remember, assessed value has grown on the natural, each year they grow annually, but they also grow because of sales and new development. So as, as properties are sold and the homes get reassessed at that new market val, or that new assessed value when there's a market sale or when there's new development, those are also drive the assessed value.
And there's a minimum, we all know there's the minimum 2%. It's automatically 2%. Our assessed valuation goes up a minimum 2% each year. These are the types of property taxpayers I talked about. This single-family home percentage has been drifting lower because you've got these other types of taxpayers that have come into the school district's boundaries. You know, your local car washes, they're, they pay some of the property taxes that goes towards the bond. We also have some multifamily housing that's been coming in online the past couple of years. That is another driver of our assessed valuation that we've been seeing in the last two to three years.
Could you give me an example of a company that's large commercial that has moved in that pays these?
Large commercial, that's a, um, that could be your, hold on, let me think. I was, uh, look, light industrial was actually Home Depot, surprisingly. Large commercial, I would have to look that up.
Think of McKissso or the Cryoquit. They're right around the hill, on, up on the hill.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
So that's like a large industrial. There's also like a couple of, maybe the cement factories that are in town.
So it's beneficial for.
Retail.
Businesses for our district when they come in. I didn't recognize that. That's pretty cool.
Yeah, yeah. So it's not, I guess the point is, if not just the single family paying the tax, everyone's, everyone owns land.
Talking about home sale prices, this is just a graph of the last 10 years. Currently, we're around just under $700,000 for someone who would like to come into the community. And you've seen tremendous growth since 2016. It wasn't four times like Nancy, but it's gone up substantially in the city of Marietta.
Buy a house and then just don't move.
That's, that's of its principle. I think the important note here is although average home sales price has gone up, those folks that have been in their home for a long time, their assessed value has gone up, but not nearly at these levels. And so their, their tax rate will not be at this, at this market value rate, it'll be at their assessed value rate.
Yeah, good point, James. The median single-family assessed value currently is 462,000. That's the median that we have for single-family homeowners.
I know, I haven't been here that long.
This next slide is going to go over our three outstanding measures. Um, far left is Measure D that has expired back in 2024. I just want to point out, back in 2024, our aggregate geo-bond tax was just under $120, $120 per $100,000 of assessed value. It's important. A lot, a lot of times people will keep talking about market value versus assessed. So as you can see, when that Measure D expired, the tax rate has dropped down to where we're currently at, $86.45. And that's where we hold today. People are going to be seeing the property tax bills in the next few weeks, next month. And this is what they'll see is the geo-bond aggregate bond tax is $86.45 per 100,000. Moving over to the right, you see the other measures that are on the books. Measure K, which was passed in 2002, expires.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. And then Measure E, which was passed in 2006, expires in '33. And then the remaining taxes that you see is for Measure BB. And we're, we're estimating right now with that projected assessed valuation growth at four, we're in the $10 range for Measure BB starting out in 2034. So this just gives you a sense, if we did nothing now, this is what the community will see in terms of their geo-bond tax rates over time.
And just to point out, this is the projected rate. So it may change as assessed values change and all, all that good stuff. That, that causes the tax rate to change. I think, on the next slide, what we'll talk about in just a second is some potential options for future ballot measure. What it could look like, what could it, it could do the tax rate. If you guys recall, the last time we talked about a future bond measure, we talked about capping it at that 119.55 level. So we talked about using that gap between 86.45 and 119 is actually a higher number than 86.45. It's a 20-something dollar number, $26. So the number was, I think 93 was the projection at that time, was what the tax rate would fall to, and it's even lower than that at 86. And we had talked about this layering on top, but now we're going to talk about, there are different strategies we can use, like Rich said, in terms of the length of the bond, the timing of the draws, all that good stuff. So I just want to point out, this next slide is hypothetical. It's not, it's not, not our plan, it's just an option that we could use, but there are lots.
So if you're giving us a warning.
I am trying to get word, because I, I, I don't like when it's like, oh, well, I saw it on the slide. This is a hypothetical option of what could be done in, in a future measure.
So moving to page eight, eight or 19 is the hypothetical that James is just talking about. We're, we're at 86.45 currently. So the whole idea is if we go to the voters next year, how can we structure the new measure's tax rate over time, layering on this new measure on top of the existing? So there's different strategies of showing the community, hey, that the tax rate's actually going to drop over time. We're not going to go above the 86.45 that we, we currently are. Going forward, our new bond program, once again, based on projected assessed valuation growth of 4%, will be structured that we will not break these different target ranges. And this is a hypothetical. We can reconfigure this bond program anyway, the school district demonstrate, as well as community input. Once again, going back to polling, we're going to get some of this feedback as to what the, the community is willing to accept. But this is, just gives you an idea of how we structure a bond program.
So we, what we could ask the voters for is that maximum 60, but we can still structure in a way that it doesn't increase taxes above the current rate today by, by extending that timeline. So you can see the orange bars would be that new tax rate. So by kind of stepping into it and not using the full 60, it allows, it allows us to stay below that cap we're currently at as an option. We could just layer a whole 60 bucks on top of it and go up to 146,000, or 146 per $100,000. That would be an option to, this would be kind of a middle ground option.
Yeah, this is, as I was going to say, if you, if you upped it earlier, then you'd see even a bigger drop off over time.
Correct. Yeah, so there's, there, you could, there are different methods. You could smooth it out, you could.
Kind of like a soft blow.
Right, so I say, kind of, yeah.
Right? I mean, that's the thing, it's really what it is, James Quinn.
And we could structure the length of it up there, right? So this shows that going up 26.33, we don't need to go up to 25.63. You could go to, there's different lengths you could go. So that, that's what I was trying to warn. This is, this is not what we're proposing, this is a hypothetical. But the, the point is there are ways to do it without increasing the tax rate above where we currently are today, if that's something that the board thinks is.
So when we do a poll, how, like, what is the percentage of people who actually respond to these polls? Like, I'm just curious.
So then.
Do you get good feedback? Because I know this historically that.
I understood like a survey we put out and see who responds, and the pollsters, a scientific poller, who this is their primary business. They will, they will strategically do polls across different demographics, age groups, registered.
So like intensive.
It's a very intensive, by type of household, by type of.
It's like one of the surveys being put out.
No, it's not a generic thing.
Two hundred.
Yeah, no, no.
Okay.
And they, they will poll and continue calling until they get enough responders to get a significant, to do a statistically significant analysis.
I tend to be pretty, within our community here.
Here, here.
Do you get poll calls?
So it, they call every, every registered people in the community.
Just one, just curious. I didn't know how this works.
Call me all the time.
They do?
But this is a good example of a way to structure it. Because if you were, if you were called, could you slip like one of the slides in the floor, just one, just one back? The tax rate that just, no, one, oh, okay, I'm sleeping. So what we just had in '24, those of us who pay taxes, we're paying at a rate of 119. But Measure D is paid off. So now our new tax rate going forward is 86. Advance the slide, please. Even this proposed new bond still keeps that rate, it doesn't go back up above 100, the way this is structured this way. Which also means we're not drawing any funds yet. We draw like later.
Yeah, this is a good point, Dr. Andrew. They're backloading our draws. So our upfront projects, it's going to be a smaller amount because we got a smaller tax. So these are some of the things we got to consider, that we really got to prioritize our projects, knowing the fact that the bulk of the bond will come seven, six to seven years from now, because we're, we're limiting our tax.
That would also mean, though, that the, there wouldn't be the same pressure to get another bond if the, most of the bonds not coming for another.
Well, if you, yeah, because what, and what it means then to the, and this is part of like, and you'll see this in the end slide. We have some leftover in BB. We could draw a little bit in '28 and '29, but we're not doing big, we're not doing big giant projects that are, you know, millions and millions and millions of dollars until we can get to a bigger draw, unless we structure it so that tax rate came higher earlier. So this is a way to do it that would demonstrate kind of a step down tax on homes, you know? But it also means we're not getting to the big ticket projects later. But now that also being said, it does take some time to plan and bid and do all that work. Like, you just can't go, hey, we're going to build a two-story classroom at this school, break ground tomorrow. It still is, you know, 18 to 24 months out before you can get to any of that.
So that priority list is pretty critical in terms of the most needed.
Yeah, yeah, what's most needed and what can we afford with the available funds on what we're going to draw? If the goal and the commitment is to like keep a leveled tax rate. If the board said, no, we need to go up a little bit, like back up to the 100 mark, so we're going to draw a little bit more, like that little orange in '28, '29 gets a little bigger or '27 even, but we're going to go after, we're going to go build this, right? We're going to go, we're going to take care of Chevellas and Thompson's gyms, right? Because that's what we are after. Then we may, that may be part of the conversation about what we want to do. But this, this is a way to structure a continual, like a maintain the tax rate, step it down over the years.
Okay.
This way, but it also means we're not doing big projects for another, wow, a few years. And we still have to establish in the, in the ballot language itself, the maximum tax rate. So that, so in this case, the max tax rate listed in the ballot measure would be 60. And so it all depends on the messaging and the promises we make to the voters, right? So we get, whether we do 60 layered on top immediately or 60 as the max rate at some point in the future, the ballot itself will still list 60 as the max rate. So that will drive to the polling and what the community is going to support. It should, will all be part of the conversation, that polling that happens as we start planning and structuring different options.
Okay.
Okay, good question. Any other questions about this slide?
No. Well, back to me. Brings us to the end. And so the facility projects are up there. We built this slide just to kind of share with some of the things that we're looking forward to this next summer as we come into our, our summer work. And so some of the work that we'll be doing is mostly, you know, a lot of HVAC at multiple schools, some fire alarm. We are actually in process right now of planning the merit-of-value full deck, which is going to be paid with, from CFD dollars. We need to upgrade high school stadium lights. Those are on all the time. As you know, we start at 8:30 now at our high schools and pushes all of our practices out late. And so our plan is to be able to upgrade our stadium lighting to LED lighting to save dollars immediately after that project's done. We also have this to Mary High School's track and turf that is due this next summer. We also need to update burglar alarms inside of our school district offices. And we also have routine district paint, paving, flooring, and playgrounds. So to illustrate, if the 26 bond measure does pass, we will have dollars for the future to provide new projects that are identified and prioritized in the master plan. If, in fact, we are not successful with a bond, we will really go into, we have that last draw of $9 million, kind of holding it for a rainy day. And then that's what we'll, we will be working with in, in addition to our existing facility dollars. We will be just trying to maintain as best as we can.
Yeah, that's not much money for a public school district.
No, it doesn't even replace, it doesn't even replace this to Mary High School's A track.
Right.
But nevertheless, it will, again, we will be utilizing dollars to maintain existing district systems, not necessarily anything new. That would be my recommendation to the board, anyway.
Thanks for the visual. This is actually really helpful.
And lastly, the last slide I have, Eleanor, I thought it was, we do have an FAQ for you.
Yeah, but you're quick on that. The, the, the one on, so you, Rick doesn't have that slide?
The one that's been posted up online.
The, the one that, the one that's linked in the agenda.
Okay.
Has a link to an FAQ.
Perfect.
And so take a look at that FAQ. It's pretty in-depth, a lot of words. We'll have a picture of Dr. Anderson's office and saying, no, it didn't.
No, no.
No, but the FAQ that is, will be attached on the website. It's actually in the PDF there for viewers to work through, kind of draft format. Because again, I think there's room for to add things. We'll work in with our bond console tomorrow. This team civics will be in town tomorrow to work along with our side, along with Rich, myself, James.
General FAQ that they've come up.
They do, but again, it's, it's pretty light.
Okay.
It's FAQ light, the conversations, the way I took this is you have a lot of good questions, and I really felt that I memorialized some of the questions you were asking me.
That's unfortunate. I memorialized my question.
And I produced them inside the FAQ, but a lot of the FAQ also is just kind of fortified from this presentation. So if communication is, if the community has questions or whatnot, so again, you know, what is a general obligation? A general obligation bond? Why do school districts, you know, need to issue bonds? A lot of things we covered tonight are here. So if someone doesn't want to go and listen to this tape, they can go into here and.
So instead of an attached PDF, is there any way they can make those clickable links for question, or is that weird? Is that too much?
Sure we could. I'm sure we could, yeah.
I, I always think of the end user in software, the host wants to make the interface as easy as.
Again, this. That on there.
Yeah.
To check for understanding if that's what you're looking for.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much tonight for your attention tonight. We really appreciate it.
And so he can add on the spreadsheets and the PowerPoint, James. We just need to adjourn.
Yeah, let's do that. All right, I call for a motion to adjourn the Board of Education workshop. Is that seven, seven fifty, six, forty-five? Six fifty-five.
They're moved. Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.